I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. All nations under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll call the regular council meeting order and entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sir.
And a second.
Second.
Move to second and further discussion.
I have three corrections on minutes. The first one is page one, appointment of KPP voting delegate. We need to add Steve Hart's name in as alternate. The next correction is at the bottom of the page. And the first sentence says Jones told council members that the bucket truck lease was coming up for renewal. What Jones actually said was that the lease is up already and we have officially paid more for the truck than it would cost to buy it. This quote is from the video on October the sixteenth. I suggest you review that and make corrections there however you want to. The third one is on page two. And it says, I guess it starts on page, page one where it says Herbal made a motion to approve tabling the item until January twenty twenty four. And you said it died for lack of motion or lack of second. Actually Zach seconded that and the motion failed two to three. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? All those favorite signals obviously saying aye.
Aye.
An aye, those both same sign. If you carry five to zero, can I motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And would that be with the changes for the minutes?
Yes.
And then it's minutes. Now okay, is there a second?
Also.
Can move to second and further discussion.
Yes, I have a few questions. Brogan, would you explain to me what these transfers are for?
What they're for?
Yeah.
The eighty thousand that's from the utility was what the, that's the equipment reserve for the sewer machine. That transfer hadn't been done, so we had to move that transfer.
We only spent thirty eight thousand for that.
But it was budgeted to transfer eighty.
And so we have to budget all of it?
I mean. So we transferred over eighty to cover?
The rest of the.
The rest of the, yeah. And then the one fifty to bond an interest from electric and forty thousand from special highway bonding.
Okay, let's go back to the one fifty from the electric to the bond and interest. What is that for?
It's for the bond payment.
On which?
The bond.
Which one? Which bond? Sorry, what?
I don't know which bond, the ones that were.
While you guys are looking that up, I might just ask, how did we pay for the sewer machine before we transferred the money?
I wasn't here. I don't know how they paid.
Good, good answer, Brogan.
Those two, series twelve and series thirteen, right? So it's the series twelve refunding and the series thirteen bonded then.
Okay, and they're both? I know the series thirteen, I think, was due first of October. How did we pay that without transferring this money?
We tran, well, we paid it and it would have been showing in. Correct, it was showing in a negative, so we didn't transfer that way. We did not show it.
Okay.
I'm guessing these were probably originally scheduled as year end transfers. We just did them now, that way we didn't have that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All those favorite signals obviously saying aye. Aye, those both same sign. If you carry five zero. Number five, new hire for PD, Chief Hovin.
Yeah, so last week, we hired Peyton Heiderbrecht. He's coming over from the sheriff's office. He's got three years' experience. He starts next Monday. He'll primarily be on nights. And then the K nine program, so I've got a gentleman that's interested in a position but has a K nine. I've talked to, so it's Aaron Slater from the sheriff's office. I've talked to Jeff and he's willing to sell us the K nine. He just wants the, what he paid us last year, wants that back. So that amount is sixty six seventy nine oh one, which we obviously still have. We have a K nine fund set up that's all been funded by donations. We've got roughly twelve thousand dollars in there. The remaining balance of that K nine fund would fund the next year of purchases and food and vets and all that kind of stuff for the K nine. And then Aaron would have to do fundraising again next year, just like he had done years past. So really, all I'm looking for is council to approve us purchasing this K nine from the sheriff for that amount.
Okay, I moved and we denied this, acquiring the K nine. We just got rid of it in January and there was a vote of four to one. I was the one that didn't want to sell it. Nobody else wanted to get rid of it because it was expensive. So I don't think we really need it. Hillsborough doesn't have.
I have a question.
A K nine officer.
Well, do we have to get the dog to get this policeman?
Yes.
You have to, how good?
So it's been his K nine partner for four or five years. So it's basically a member of his family at this point. I wouldn't ask him to come over without that.
I think what I remember from the conversation last year, and we'd have to go back and double check this, but that sixty six seventy nine oh one came from the age of the dog, right? What we paid for it minus the depreciated cost of the life of the dog and the stuff that was going with it.
Right.
So while that sixty six, sixty six seventy nine oh one is probably the starting point, we are, we're coming up on a year now, right? Of another year of depreciation on that. So I think we would need to go back, in my opinion, we need to go back and figure out, right? What we use to determine the depreciation to get to that sixty six seventy nine oh one last year? And add an additional year onto that and go back with an offer that would, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't know, anybody else?
Yeah, we just, that was, sorry, I, that was the number Jeff presented to us. And that's what, when Brogan and I went and talked to him today, that's what we just sort of expected. That basically we would just pretend like the last year of Aaron being gone didn't happen and we would just start over from where we were. So like I said, the money's all there also. That K nine fund can only be used for a K nine program. It's not coming out of the city's budget. It comes with, so part of that sixty six is a little bit of equipment. It's a kennel that is like a thousand dollar kennel and an e-collar and Aaron's vest and a few other things.
Well, that was going to be my question is what? I think the balance, I said it was six thousand for the dog and then the addition was the equipment that he purchased that we had. So he's going to give us that equipment.
Right, yeah, yeah, like I said, basically, we're just going to pretend like the whole last year didn't happen. All the equipment that he took with him, he's coming back with. Anything that the sheriff bought, any pouches or whatever that they bought for his vests, the sheriff's office will keep. But everything he left with, he'll come back with.
We've done without the K nine for a whole year and we really haven't missed it, have we?
We also haven't, I mean, the last year's been a train wreck, but we also haven't been out, we haven't, I mean, the last year Aaron was here, we seized two vehicles, both from local people that were dealing drugs in this community and we haven't seized any this year. So I'm not going to say that's a hundred percent because of the K nine program because we've also just been in a weird position this year.
Well, Hillsborough doesn't have a K nine program and they get along sufficiently without a K nine dog, do they not?
As far as I know, but they're also using the county's canines when they need canine.
Does the K nine cost us anything?
It does not. So previously, the, coming out of the city budget was about fifty dollars for insurance. Was all that came out of the city's budget. Everything else came out of this K nine fund, which is all donations. But fifty dollars here or there, we can take that out of the K nine fund, so it's not coming out of the city's budget.
And then by bringing the dog back, we'd get another fully certified officer on staff?
Right, right, with eight years' experience. So when we've got five years left, roughly, five years of working life left with Blue.
So we got rid of the dog because he left.
Because he left, yeah. So, and that would put us, with Aaron coming over, that would put us fully staffed. And Aaron obviously already knows how we're doing things, so he would be able to hit the ground running and be working. If he started today, he'd be working tonight.
I don't think that the reason that we voted to get rid of the K nine program was because we didn't want the K nine program. I think some of it was more that the dog and Aaron had the relationship already and we didn't want, nobody that was on the staff at the time wanted to take on the extra responsibility of the dog. We didn't want to feel like, this was me anyway. I didn't feel like it was right to try and separate the two. And so it was like, okay, let's just let the dog and Aaron, you know, if Aaron's not going to be here, let's just let him go. That was at least where I was, so.
Right, and so I would say that we didn't, I mean, maybe you might remember it different. We didn't necessarily vote to get rid of the K nine program. I mean, it was to sell that K nine. So with the sale of that K nine, there's still twelve thousand dollars in that account that would be used for another K nine program.
Would the K nine be available through the sheriff's office if we needed it?
It is currently, yes.
And we haven't used it in the last year?
Again, it's been, it's been a weird year, to say the least.
How many dogs does the county have?
They have two currently. One is pretty close to ready for retirement.
And so if we take the other one, they'll be down to nothing?
I mean, they'll be down to one, but then that, the handler they have left would most likely get another K nine when that one retires. It's my understanding that they're budgeted for two and so they're just, they have two currently, so when they lose one, they would find another handler and another K nine and get their second dog up and running.
But they're going to lose both if we take one back? Because the one that's going to retire, and if we take Slater and the dog back, then they have the dogs. You said there was two.
Well, but I don't, I don't know exactly when that one's ready to retire. I just know that she's getting old. So, and like I said, that, that handler would get another dog and that, that's a like six week process to, once you find the dog, it's pretty quick training and you're back up and running.
Sounds like Jeff's on board with it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, the biggest argument's going to be, are you going to let, would you tell him no as coming over as a certified officer just because he wants to get the dog with him? I can't say, I can't say that with the situation we've been in. We get a full, fully certified guy, eight years' experience and a dog that's proven to work and works rather well.
Is there going to be additional training for the dog and the officer?
He has, he has training has to go to regularly, correct?
Right, but we're all required to go to training every year.
How many years was Slater, the dog, on the Marion?
He was here for five years. And I think he got the dog, I think he got Blue after a year and a half or two years here. So I think total, they've been working together for four.
Well, I think if that gets us another certified officer that's got some experience and if, if there's no ongoing cost, if all that's covered off by donations.
Yeah, it's, it all comes out of the K nine fund. Which is, right, it can only be used for the K nine program, but it's all from donations. So in the past, he's done a, he sponsored the color run last, year before last maybe, for Chingo Wassa Days, but he does a, a five K like fun run every year as well. So, and all the donations that come in from that is what funds that program.
I'm trying to remember, did, was that a budget, is that a budgeted expense for this year?
What?
A purchase at all?
No, but we, we can't budget those funds. They can only be used in that K nine expense.
I understand it, but we still spend it.
We're spending it, yes, but no, it wasn't a budgeted expense out of this year. That's why it's coming back to you guys.
Would the, the purchase of the dog comes out of the K nine funds or comes out of the budget?
Comes out of K nine. That's where those funds went back. That's where the six thousand six hundred seventy nine went.
So we sold it to the county and went back to that fund?
Because that's the only thing those things can be used for.
Well, if we're going to consider this, I like Zach's idea that we need to re-figure it to see if that's what we really want to give the county. Because it's a year over, so we've lost some workability.
I don't know if it's worth arguing over. Fight it.
Well, it might be.
We gotta keep a good, we gotta keep a good working relationship with our sheriff's department. This is another guy that he's going to lose and wants to come over to us. He hasn't even had the dog a year. I think, and I think Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, he's on board with this, that the best thinking is to kind of say, this didn't work out, let's act like the last year didn't exist or didn't happen, let's move forward, let's keep our relationship. We don't need to burn any bridges over what might be five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars.
I bet you were wishing the last year didn't happen too.
Yeah, I, I understand your point, Ruth, that the dog is worth less now because it's a year older, the equipment's a year older. But just like Brogan said, at the same time, for the maybe five hundred dollars out of the K nine donation account that we would save, it, it's worth keeping a good relationship with the sheriff's office.
How many years?
Don't tell Jeff that, Jerry.
There's five years left from the third.
Yeah.
I think in order to get an officer, we need to get the dog because it's big zone.
Got to make the motion.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Technically have one on the floor already.
What we do?
Ruth has a motion on the floor.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, now we go.
Your second to Jerry's motion.
Second.
We move to second and further discussion.
So this is at that, at the rate that Jeff is, is that right, Jerry?
Yeah.
All those favorite signals obviously saying aye. Aye, those both same sign. If you carry five zero. Number six, KPP solar project opportunities, Brogan.
Okay, so I got contacted by KPP last week and went over to McPherson on Thursday last week. They are putting in for a loan forgiveness application through USDA for solar energy. They want to put in twenty megawatts of solar in their member cities. They picked Marion as a place where they would put in a one megawatt system. So, this is being said, this is at no cost to the city. The only thing we have to figure out in that they would have to get is where are we going to put this solar array? There was a map included with your guys' packets and minutes. There's two options. If it's in color, the first one is purple. It's up by behind Dollar General in that area where our current solar array is, which would be the far right one, is where our current solar array is and that is the area that would be needed for the new addition to the solar array. The bottom left is the east side of our industrial park that would, that could be used for this solar array.
There actually is a third location we could consider and that's what we own north of the transfer station back in there. There's like twelve acres in there. Ten or twelve acres.
So I'd have to check with KPP. I can bring that up to them and I'll talk to Darren too, that way we have a map, because I got to give them a plot map of what it is. But yes, that could be an option.
They paid for all the installation.
Everything. We have, there's zero cost to the city. KPP is doing this to add to their portfolio of what they have for power generation.
I mean, this is, this is a win-win for the city.
What do we, what do we get out of it?
So it's, we're in the beginning stages, there's not a hundred percent on, what they're thinking about doing is we would do a thirty year land lease to them. And what they would do is, for us, being the tenant of their solar array, they would give us a credit on our kilowatt per hour purchase price. They would also turn.
The bulk purchase price.
Bulk purchase price, yes. They would also turn and we would do small things. So if they had like spraying the area around the arrays, some little stuff like that, they would contract with us to maintain and they will pay us to maintain that area.
But we don't know what that credit is?
We don't know yet what, so this all got sprung on them pretty quick. They got, they figured out that they were eligible a week and a half ago. They put together their cities that they are wanting to do this in, invited us all to McPherson to get an idea on if they were, if we were willing to do it. They want to know something from us by November tenth because they have to get with the company they're working with to get site plans and everything drawn up to get their application in by December second, I believe.
So you said one?
Megawatt.
Megawatts.
Six to seven acres.
Okay. Can you put that in perspective, like the only solar system I know is Brandon Kraus out here, Spur Ridge. What does he create?
Oh, no, not anywhere close. Uh, I believe sixty kilowatts.
Okay, it's not a megawatt, Ben.
So like the other panels that are up there, that's two hundred fifty.
Brogan, what, do you have any idea what the one is that's on seventy seven down by like the mound ridge turnoff? There's a big one down there.
I looked at that coming back the other day, I don't know what that is.
Okay, my next question is, how many two hundred fifty kilowatts is in this megawatt, Ben?
Oh, maybe, maybe we do all times.
Four, I think it'd be four. Good question, Ruth. It's four, Bro.
Thank you. You got a.
So it'd be, it'd be four times the size of what we've got up there currently.
Six to seven acres of land mass is what it would take.
What do we get off of that up there now?
We own that array. That is.
It should be coming back into our system then, correct?
Yes, and I got to think of what it is. Let me look on the monthly.
I think it's twenty five KW, you put them on probably.
Twenty five KW. Is that a rate?
Not two hundred fifty.
No, twenty five KW, so there's.
I was going to say, that one's not very big.
Twenty five KW.
And they're talking six to seven acres, that one's not anywhere even near an acre, so.
So this twenty five KW goes back into our system now? It doesn't get past somewhere else?
Well, it all just goes back into the line, right? And then you just get credited for what you push back in.
Is that right?
So this is technically behind our meter, we do not, KPP doesn't. What we will get is from them for letting us have it here is the amount of money off of our kilowatt per hour purchase price. Well, also, in theory, we're going to see a reduction in that kilowatt purchase price because this is supposed to help them offset their peak usage.
Well, it sounds like a good program, but I'd like to do a little bit more investigation on that ten or twelve acres behind or north of the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, all I have to tell them is yes, we are.
Interested.
Inter, well, I need to tell them, yes, we're interested and yes, we're okay moving forward. I just need to tell them the location.
I'm, I'm, I'm agree with Ruth because we're taking lots off of the table.
Exactly.
There were. About four of them. About four.
That's a prime lots.
That's four, that's four lots.
Two of them are, two of them are more or less useless in a big way with the drainage that's going through them.
At one time, on the north one, that we're up by the highway, we were going to put a hotel in there.
So that's the, more or less the L on that map. The other one is probably preferred. After talking with Darren and a couple of members of KPP, there's the bottom right one is
I see it's the green one.
The east side of the industrial park. The two north lots on that have a drainage running through it that make about half of the lot.
So the next question is, are we going to have to build roads in there? Let's make it look better.
We, we could still build our lot, our roads through there for our industrial lot.
I would tend to agree with Dave and Ruth that my number one choice would be that land north of the transfer station. And I care about that too. Probably about worthless thing, I mean, for like development, we could do that down there would be, I think.
I just got to ask them.
It'd be outside.
Did they, did you confer with them about these lots at industrial park?
All we did was send them the map of where our current array was and then that green. I sent them that.
Why don't, why don't you talk to them about the land that we own north of the transfer station? Because that land really is useless to us and these are lots that we can sell.
Yeah.
So.
If there's ten or twelve acres down there, we'd have room for more if they really want.
Yeah, and if, they'd probably take us up on it if it's turning into, it depends on what they. So let's be clear, if we want to pitch them that idea, what I'm going to have to do is let them know, let them see if it's even feasible for them with exposure and everything else. And then we're probably going to have to call a special meeting to say, yes, we want to go ahead with this.
So what was the date by the tenth?
I need to tell them by November tenth.
Surely the sun shines as bright down there if it doesn't.
Well, I'm talking about trees and everything else. I don't think the sun is the issue.
Surely we could cut the trees down too.
Yeah, I mean, I just need to make sure that they're.
Right, Steve?
They're looking for us.
I don't know what trees are.
If that's what we want to do, I just got to tell them that we'll probably, it's all, have to call a special meeting, just so you know.
That's twenty acres.
I think that down there would be a great, great location. Want to go ahead and make a motion on it then?
Yeah, I mean.
I'll make a motion that we would go back to KPP with the lots north of the transfer station.
And how about if that's acceptable, we can contract with them?
Yeah, and if, if they agree to that, then we'd be willing to sign a contract with them.
Okay. I think I'll know pretty quick, so I'll let you guys know in, well, I think we should call a special council meeting and go and make sure we're done. But I'll let you know when I hear back from them.
So that's three acres there, two and a half, two and three quarters, so.
All right, you want to repeat your motion?
Yeah. Make a motion to go back to KPP with the land north of the transfer station. And if that's acceptable to them, that we would be willing to sign a contract.
Okay, any questions?
How, how many acres did you say is down there total?
Looks like.
Two point nine, two and a half, and two and three quarters.
Your second?
Second.
We move to second and further discussion. Question. All those favorite signals obviously saying aye. Aye, those both same sign. If you carry five zero. Number seven, Altech bucket truck, Brogan.
Okay, so on front of you, first, I want to go ahead and say that I talked with Tim at Altech. Our lease is a five-year lease. It is not up until September twenty fourth. That's my fault, I was wrong on that. With that being said, we still need to look into how this is going to play out. After talking to him, the earliest we could get a truck through Altech, cabin chassis, built out everything is first quarter of twenty twenty six. We have been talking, we talked to him and figured out that if we can come up with our own cabin chassis and get it to Altech, we have a chance to get a bucket truck, a good chance to get one in twenty twenty five. So that's the route that we went today that you have in front of you. That's sixty eight eight hundred for the cabin chassis of the truck. That's on the ground, we could get tomorrow. And then I believe one forty five?
One forty five, two forty eight.
One forty five, two forty eight is the cost to get, get it built out by Altech. So it comes out to a price of two fourteen, zero forty eight for the truck. And if we want them to ship it, because it's got to go to North Carolina, it's twenty one hundred.
To get it there and back?
To get it there. It's got to go to North Carolina.
I know, but then we got to get it back.
We got to get it back in twenty twenty five, so we have to figure that part out. That total comes out with shipped to two sixteen, one forty eight.
Mayor, why don't you tell them about the fire truck, what you did, so this.
This is, this is that.
Yeah, but a lot of people don't know that, Brogan.
Oh, okay, so what we're thinking, what we're talking about doing now is this truck is on a lot, Steve found. He's got an allocation of these and he's got them on the ground right now. So if we move forward, theoretically, we could buy this truck and have it tomorrow. Then we'd send it to Altech in North Carolina and they would build out the truck on our chassis that we already own. So just like what Dave did with the fire trucks. This actually made our cha- uh, chassis cost drop.
And we, we think then we would have the truck back when?
We have a good chance of having it in twenty-five.
Any, did they give it like first quarter, second quarter?
We got a chance of having it in twenty-five.
Yeah.
Because it's not in their schedule. They get their trucks, they're building their trucks out first. They get a gap, arc will be wheeled in and hopefully get up and done. He did tell us that we have a good chance of getting it done in twenty-five. If we order it through them, the earliest we can have one is twenty-six.
So how many chassis does this company have on the ground right now?
So.
Can we wait two months is what I'm asking?
Arc, the dealership we're talking about, they have, I believe, a hundred of them.
So we could wait two months and let the new council take hold of it?
No. These trucks are being bought by REAs, Evergy, everybody else. These trucks will be gone soon.
Where's this located at?
Steve, where's, is Stephen back there?
Yeah.
Oh.
I can't remember the dealership.
I believe, ah, it should be on one of those clothes that.
Can't remember.
I feel like the bad news is on one of those. It should say at the bottom that it's.
What, what's the name of the dealer?
Well, it's on my floor. Cause all I have is the back sheet.
It's about steel which is through.
It can't seem to hurry.
Yeah, he's on KC Mo.
Okay.
And another dealership in Missouri is where he actually has these trucks in it.
Okay, and this was the government discount?
Yep.
Then we're, we're purchasing, we wouldn't get that government discount on the chassis if we ordered from Altech. But then we're purchasing from a dealer, we'll, we receive a government discount. That's how we did with the fire truck.
So the chassis cost was sixty-eight thousand eight hundred. Sixty-eight thousand eight hundred.
And then the height of that boom and everything specked out by Altech and that gets us to cover everything that we're, say that we can't lift the truck, current trucks?
This is the exact same build out as the other truck we needed. Just on the Dodge platform.
But that would cover, we'd be able to get to everything we've got in the city then with this newer truck. Is that, that's accurate, Steve?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have a need still for that, the bigger old truck that we have?
It would be nice to have two, just in case one goes down, we can still work the fifties like on North Cole and Cedar, so we can have two trucks.
Steve, how many bucket trucks do we have?
We have three right now.
Well, I could only find two on the equipment list. The two, two thousand and nineteen is not on the equipment list. And I was kinda wondering why.
It's in, it's under, it's in my budget. I've seen.
Well, I know it's in your budget.
I mean, it's on my budget sheet.
You have a, do you have the updated or the old one? We've done the, we've been updating that.
I know, but I thought it was the updated one.
Okay. I'll, I can get you the, I can get you the updated one I have.
And I think, I think there's some equipment on there that we sold on Purple Wave. You should.
So the new one should, the one I have on my desktop's updated for all of that out. So I can get it to you.
Thank you.
So then if that, that nineteen then is the one that's currently on lease?
Yes, and it'll go to Altech.
So then the other one is an oh-eight, would there be a need for that then? Or would that be something that we could sell after we, if we got, went forward with that one? Would that be something you could sell?
Well, that's, you're, I think you're talking about the High Ranger. That's the only one.
The other little one.
Oh.
There's a smaller one that's an oh-eight.
I, personally, I wouldn't, I would keep that truck around just to trim trees and stuff like that, while, while you're not tearing up the Rinaldi's truck. And that way we can use it at cemetery to do the evergreens and stuff too.
We already own that truck.
We always had.
Right. No, I was just asking, I mean, Steve, you know.
We could prob, I mean, we could see what it would be worth through them and.
Right.
Argue it, but then we're using, we're bringing a new truck for everything Steve just said.
Right.
Unless we use the big truck for it.
Unless we use the big truck for it.
Which you can't always get into every right.
What's the pleasure?
So tell me a little bit about this wood truck that we have. I keep hearing it won't fit in the alleys and everything else. Why didn't we ever buy that?
The High Ranger?
I don't know.
That's, that's the one we're caught right, Steve. The twelve-five line is so high, that's the only one that'll reach up there.
But it won't fit in the alleys.
Well, yeah, but our twelve thousand five hundred volt line, it comes across the south side of town, the north side of town. Cause they've gotta get up there and replace the wire or something. They can't reach it with the other bucket trucks. That's the only one that can go up that high.
The only one, which one is that?
The High Ranger. That's the oldest one we got.
It's on that big, I think, right? See, it's on that big like two-ton international frame, right?
Yeah.
But just tell me the year.
That's a nineties model.
Nineties.
Nineties.
They, they bought that when they built the twelve-five line.
I'm not so hundred percent sure on that one. Say, I think on our equipment list it says ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're looking for tonight is approval to purchase the chassis. And go ahead and ship it to North Carolina so that it essentially would just sit there and wait for them to be able to find a gap in their.
Yes, assembly. Yep. Exactly.
And they're okay with this?
Who's, they are?
That.
Altech?
Altech.
Yeah.
Letting it sit on the road until they get to.
They do it more than, with the way, since COVID hit, before, say, these aren't real numbers, say they got three thousand chassis a year from these guys. Now they're only getting two. So that's where we have people say what we did. If we find our own chassis and we get it to you and we have a chance to get it built out. Yes, we do, because they could have an issue where they can't get any new chassis then, they'll build our, our truck in the process.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're fine with it. We just have to let them know when we get it, when it's coming and everything like that.
And this Altech factories, is that the only one we have is North Carolina?
That's the only place this truck is built. They have one in Jeff City, Missouri, but it's smaller trucks, like the nineteen we have now.
And we have the money in the budget to, just to buy the chassis now and then the bucket part or the bed part of that then would come out in twenty-five?
So we have the money in his reimbursements that he's done. We can cover the chassis easily.
So is that gonna come?
Electrical reimbursement. So when he did, uh, the copper, when he's done transformers from the project, anything he sold like that that goes back into his electrical reimbursement fund.
So it wouldn't come out of the budget? We haven't budgeted this money. Is that correct?
It's, yeah, it's what we've brought back in reimbursements from copper cells, from transformers when KPP did their overbuying of, into these stuff like that.
And then the remaining.
Good job, Steve. Sixty-eight thousand?
The remaining.
Number one.
One forty-five, two forty-eight would not be due until we take possession of that truck.
Yes. And we probably, the best way I think to probably do that, you guys can tell me no or yes, is to do it through Altech. Similar, just like we pay our lease now, we would just do, or we could go out and do it through bid through the three banks.
Financing.
That's up to you, that's up for you guys to decide how you wanna do it.
And when do we need to decide this?
Before we take that truck before twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five when we take possession.
So.
We'll have a contract written that's completed, when they complete the cut. And then we'll, I, I would suggest to go out and, you know, repossess it again.
Let's say, if you have some more like those reimbursements, or let's say you had half the money to pay down, then can you just buy, can you do that and then finance?
Yeah.
The remaining part, so.
Find some more wire, Steve.
I'll try.
Your motion?
Make a motion to approve purchase of the Ram chassis in the amount of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, plus the shipping price of twenty-one hundred dollars. To have Altech complete the proposed bucket truck. Does that cover it? Okay?
Yeah.
Here, a second?
Second.
You move the second in further stacking.
I just have one question. On this sixty-eight thousand eight hundred, is there tax on that?
No.
No.
There is not. That's the government rate, the sixty-eight eight hundred.
Okay.
Had to find another number.
So then the, the bid from that, from that Altech for the one forty-five, two thirty-eight, is that, that's firm price?
That's, yeah.
Even though it's two years down the road.
That is what he told us it'll take to build out that truck.
Do we have that in writing?
Yeah, this, this right here. This is their bid.
Is it signed?
We have signed it, so they have not signed it.
But if it is, then that price is locked in.
Yeah, at two fourteen, oh forty-eight for the truck. That's not counting the shipping. So if you count the shipping Zach just said, it's two sixteen, one forty-eight.
One more question. All of the favorite six and five, the same aye. Aye, there's both same sign. Most of Kerry, five to zero. Number eight, Rogan, Spur Ridge.
The manure dumpster. So we heard back from KDAG. This is, it's a fine, this service is perfectly fine to provide. We are underneath the limits of where we come in to contact departments. They check it. Randomly, but I believe it's once every quarter. They check that area anyway at the dump site. So the point is, and the thing that I wanna pose to you guys today, is this service has been being performed free of charge. I think we need to equate a dollar amount to this. I have a recommendation in your packet. That just says, I believe the city needs to reevaluate this and assess the cost of the service. After talking with Tim and the members of our trash collection service, the sheer amount of time and resources that this service takes. Uh, to complete is reason enough to seek an appropriate compensation. I think. That number's hard to put a number on. We do not dump it, say we don't dump regularly, we don't dump it once a week, we don't dump it once a month even for that matter. We could dump it two times, three times in a month. We couldn't dump it for three months. We only have one entity in town that's on this. The service takes two guys, has an average runtime of an hour. It takes two, our two guys off of our trash route to run this. They have to have an empty truck, a clean truck to be able to perform the service. That's why after reviewing it, talking with Tim, talking with Danny, I recommend we implement a base fee of fifty dollars a month for the service. It's our dumpster and our guys.
Where do we dump it?
We dump it at our compost.
Well, I think this, I'd take this to Rogan or take it in order.
Backside of it. It would be in addition, I wanted to get your guys' idea of what, what you think of going forward with this. It hasn't been done in the past. So what this will be is if we say yes, we need to impose a price on this, next meeting you'll have an ordinance in front of you with that cost to add to our fee structure during.
How, how full is that dumpster typical when we dump it? I mean, is it full?
Yeah.
So what if we go to, instead of, cause you're saying it's, it's an irregular rate, right? So I don't know that it's necessarily fair to charge a monthly fee if it's like. You know, we dump it three times in three months and then we don't dump it again for six months. What if we do a per dump fee?
Yeah.
I, I like that.
Does this also apply to animal health on, on South Cove? Are they, are we dumping for them?
No, there's only one in town. There's only one per, or one entity that has this service.
What do they do with theirs?
I have no, I have no idea. I think they handle it themselves from what I've seen. I think they have an old dumpster that they bring in and out. I also don't know if they do the same amount as large animal business, I guess.
What would you think? I don't know, how's the dumpster?
I don't know, that's, yeah. How much time do you say that it takes?
It takes an hour for them to, because they gotta go from the trash route, back to the shop, pick up clean empty truck. Go get the dumpster, go dump it, take the dumpster back, come back, clean that truck out and resume their trash route. Want to figure it out for our offshore. And do that as a per, per dump basis?
Yeah, I would, I think that'd be more fair.
Yeah, I don't think we need to be trying to make money. I mean, I'm fine with providing the service, uh, but if we can just break even, I would think all that.
Well, I don't even know. I would, I would venture to say that would break money.
That fifty a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because two, our two guys, truck, time, I mean.
Well, would it be possible that when they go out to dump, that they could notify the city office and we would charge them for that particular time? If we do it three times?
We could tell our guys to let us know whenever they contacted dump. Because, well, they called the city office, the city.
They probably have the office.
So it's pretty, that'd be easy to do.
Okay.
That'd be.
I'd be okay with that.
Has Brendan known about this?
He was, I talked to him about it once before, that this is, it was a service and I asked Becky, I said, do you have any charges with that? And she said, no.
He might have another reason, he ain't another way to go with it. I mean, we.
Yeah. We do own the dumpsters, so that's how, we'd have to figure that out if that's how that route wanted to go, so.
And the dumpster's in good shape?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, come back next meeting with the ordinance for that.
Per dump, got it.
Per dump. Okay, number nine, Camp Fu. Anybody got anything you wanna bring up?
I missed this in when we were going through the agenda, but I just had a couple of questions on the claim list. And the first one, page one, is state sales tax. Are we not tax-free entity? It's eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents on the first item. It should be sales tax.
Fifty-six express?
Yeah, I don't know why they charge sales tax for it.
Well, we need to put a certificate down there. And then on page three, border state industries. It has state, county, and local taxes. Do we have to pay that one?
Yes.
That's a hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
We have to pay that one. That's an enterprise fund.
This one?
Enterprise fund.
Okay. And then one down below that says service charge twice on the same ticket. What is that? And it's just for shop towels?
It's sent toss. Service charge.
What is service charge though? Twice on the same invoice?
I guess it's two different deliveries.
Whoa.
No, but just one invoice?
On one invoice.
No, it's two different invoices. One was for.
Oh, ten thirty and one's nine twenty-seven.
For nine twenty-seven, one was for ten twenty-five.
They're all to the left there.
Yeah.
And then on page four, we have a job posting to the water plant. Do we have an employee that we lost or are we just looking for somebody new?
We're trying to get a certified water operator.
Okay, all right. I'm okay with that. I just thought maybe we lost somebody I didn't know of. Then on page five, down at the bottom is M and M fun-sized candy, Tootsie Roll midges, and Tootsie Child play bag. What is, what is that for? Is that Halloween?
Halloween.
Is it downtown?
Yeah.
Downtown is more so than handed out.
And, and you're gonna do that?
Yeah, I'll hand it out. That'd be awesome.
I was, I was gonna, yeah, no, I was, I was actually gonna ask on it.
Yeah, that's what that's.
Is that everything you had?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I was gonna ask on, cause last year, I know we, I think I stood down there, but, um, were we gonna get some people to hand candy out with the City of Marion, something, something downtown?
Yep.
Okay.
Good deal.
I'll try and come down there. Stay down there with somebody for a while. I'll be down there with the kids.
You were down there with the baby?
Yeah.
Was that last year? That we were down there?
Yep.
They'll probably be a little too cold for the baby.
Okay, Dave, I'm done. Thank you.
Everyone else? Okay, Zach, you got anything?
Nothing else.
Margot?
Oh, a lot going on this month. Um, the hospital had their annual banquet this last weekend. Um, this coming weekend's the alternative gift market and the MAC event. Tomorrow is from four to five trick-or-treat Marion businesses. And then on the twenty-fifth is our annual holly jolly. Celebration. That, that's an all-day deal with, it's, it's pretty fun. People come from out of town and if you haven't been to that, you gotta check it out. I, I prefer the live reindeer myself.
What date was that, Margot?
The twenty-fifth. It's, it's a Saturday after Thanksgiving, which is also a small business Saturday.
Is that the time we have the parade?
Yeah, the parade is at. Yeah, the parade is at five-thirty this year. We made it, um, half an hour later. So, and we'd like to have any of you guys in it. Try to have a little bit bigger parade this year.
I'll be in it.
Hey, Janet?
No.
Roberto?
Just a couple. Uh, update on the KPP board spot, that was vacated by John Wheeler. That one has been filled by Stacy Barnes, so.
And who is Stacy Barnes?
She's the city administrator for the city of Greensburg.
I'm sorry?
City administrator, city of Greensburg. So. And then we are updating on the lead and copper. We've done our samples this year. We're also going to talk about, um, I've been talking with Darren, he said he had a survey layout that they had conducted from when they did the last water project. We're gonna work on adapting that and sending it out on our bills to try to get a idea of what our citizens know or think are in their systems. We are actively on the lead and copper rule. And that's it for me.
Okay. Go to form, anyone with speech in the council.
Hey, Newt. Why can't we have a new ordinance? You can't have your vehicle on Main Street over seven days. And we got people parking stuff on City Right Way for months. We've asked four times and it hasn't been, nothing done, and I'd like to know why.
Uh, who'd you ask?
Pardon?
Who did you ask?
Uh, you're, and what's your name running, does around checking other cities?
James Masters.
Yeah, yeah. I've asked four times. I'm not gonna ask again.
It's a, it's a vehicle that's parked on the street material.
I, I think we're talking about the, we're talking about the dumpster behind Fleming's, right?
That's right, that's the hazard.
Yeah, um.
Why hadn't it been done? Why hadn't something been done? That's my question.
Yeah, James and I went and talked to him. You drove by actually the day we were over there talking to him.
I, I didn't see you.
But James and I went and talked to Fleming's about it. I haven't, I didn't notice after that.
On an angle?
Right.
Now it's sitting straight. That's all that was done. And on the south side of the street, we got tires on City Right Way. We can't park stuff on City Right Way. Why does this company get to do that and we don't?
I'll ask James about the tires. I know we talked to him about some pipe that was down closer.
I'm more concerned about that dumpster, cause you can't see the stop sign. Till you're right there. If you're on the stop sign, you get a ticket, but he'd park it there and block it. That's all right. I've asked four times. This is the fourth time. Nothing gets done.
Well, like I said, we talked to him the last time.
It ain't cleaned up yet? That dumpster's still there. I just came by before I come here.
Yeah, well, I mean, they may have moved it hoping that that was good enough and we just hadn't been back over.
You need to ask the city if it's good enough.
I agree.
So I'm glad you're gonna have an accident there. You can't see, you can't look to the north, and the tires and the trees are stopping from the south. There's gonna be an accident and everyone's gonna say, oh, we should have fixed that, huh? That's up to you guys. I'm not gonna ask you again. I've asked real nice, been full of patience. Nobody wants to do nothing. If he can't do his job, resign. That's my point. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sure y'all remember who I am, Pam Log. Good afternoon. Your meeting procedures state that a person is allowed three minutes to speak with the general rule. I ask that no one makes comments or statements as I speak. I do not want my time taken. You may respond once my three minutes are up. Here's the stack, and I'll start in three minutes. This is a stack of the KORs that I received to date. I'm still trying to get a few more emails, including texts. I will address that later. First, you may want to make sure the city insurance attorney, Ms. Hill, is up to speed before she makes statements. Ms. Hill made several statements to a group of us in the hallway at the last meeting. After I did some follow-up, her statement was incorrect. I have the emails from her office and the KBI that do not match up. So I'm not sure why she's lacking in knowledge. Second, your emails, Mr. Jones, Mayor, Zach Hudlin, and Mr. Collet do show there is, was a conspiracy. I believe that this is still going on and you are only missing your arrogant, strong, armed chief. The emails I have shown your intention was to get a charge on Ruth to get her removed and to go after the Marion record. I am sure I am missing a few, but enough that shows your intentions and they are, they were not good. Shame on you. These emails don't shine good light on the sheriff's office either. Mr. Jones, you need to learn your job and how to stand on your own two feet. It's unbecoming of you to be such a follower. Sorry, not sorry, Mr. Collet, for blindsiding you, but I don't have your personal cell phone to give you a call and give you a heads up. Your personal cell phones are not off limit. Sorry, I lost my spot. Your cell phones are not off limit for a copy of a text. I guess Cody got that one wrong too. The subpoenas will be coming down the pipe. You can delete, but trust me, there's, they still are there. It's called a visual footprint. Number three, the Marion PD, where'd I even start? I would say their job is to serve and protect the citizens of Marion. The only people they are protecting are you and only a select few at that. I have emails and reports from the PD. Cody went off half-cocked and Zach was a good little soldier and fell right into place. Speaking of Zach, Zach, you yourself knew Carrie was suspended. You were working at the sheriff's office as a jailer when she had to spend time for, at the sheriff's office for the driving on suspended. You were not the only one that knew. I will give you that. You, Zach, looked me directly in the face as I have asked you questions after the fact and flatlined my face. No wonder you're a good soldier.
Tom?
I will have to finish it next week.
Anyone else wish to give a counter?
Speaking of the coroner requests, um, with these emails that came out in this week, though, would you explain to the citizens why you said that you needed to get a charge against Ruth in order to get her off the council?
After you do what now?
Why, is there proof and evidence now that you said the only way to get Ruth off of the council is to have her charged with a crime? Would you address the citizens and tell us why that is and why you're thinking of this whole thing was about?
Again, I'll tell you, I don't, I don't answer again.
You, you're an elected public official, yes you do. I'm a taxpaying citizen and you're the mayor of this town. You work for us. And I hope when they get those text messages, cause they're gonna be able to get Brogans and they're gonna be able to get Cody's, and they are doing it, yours are gonna be in there too, so there's gonna be more that comes out. And you wanna sit here and tell us that you don't have to answer to us? But there's proof showing that there was a conspiracy to get Ruth fired and kicked off the council and charged on the trumped-up bullshit from your chief of police. I cannot wait until your ass is in a sleep.
Anyone else? I am taking the motion to adjourn.
I vote adjourned.
Take it. All who favor, say the five, say the high. High is supposed to say the sign. Most curious.